The first agenda item, it says in comments, is there any? I don't see any. I don't have any additions to or deletions from the posted agenda. Does anyone have anything? Okay, so that brings us to the management report, Eric.
All right, thank you very much. So this is only my fifth day since I've been here. So the report will be kind of short. But I spent the last few days really trying to meet with all the staff in the town and village. So I'm with the town hall staff, I'm with the DBW staff. The DBW director took me on a tour of the town and village, showing me the power roots, the issues they have there. I was able to sit with the firefighters last night during one of their monthly meetings and the police officers as well. Really just kind of get a sense of the staff here and what they're going through, what the needs they have and how I best can support them. I met with the state rep, Tasha Bush, yesterday, kind of talk about how we can build a relationship going forward. Asked her to do a help with the grants for the town and village. And I'm working on a plan to get out in the community at least twice a month, which hopefully more details coming soon once they get settled. But that's it for now, and I'm excited to be here and work with everyone.
Thank you very much. We have two permit applications. The first one is the covered bridges half marathon, which I see. I can't read the name, but Nancy, Nancy. I'm assuming the route is about the same as it's been the last few years, it looks.
That that's correct. It's the exact same track. It goes from Saskadina Six through Woodstock and then Down River Road. And then on to Creechy Main Street and it finishes at the Dewey Polo Fields in Creechy.
Happy to move that we grant the permit.
Okay, excellent. So there's a motion to grant the permit.
No second.
Okay, second by Harry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. That motion carries. Is there, the only thing I don't see in the packet is the insurance certificate. All right, perfect. Then Rossa, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Fingers crossed for another great year.
Yes, indeed. Next item is a liquor license for FH Gillingham's and so on electronically. There's no signatures on it. I'll buy them back to the state now.
Yeah, I was, I actually had some questions partly because of the new format. I know that, you know, the business role isn't filled out. The, there's no answer to violations. There's no location premises. And there are two Frank Billings. My guess is the one on Elm Street should be taken off. If that's the judge who can qualify.
Well, I'm think.
On Street, okay. Okay, maybe they have, maybe they just have Frank Billings twice.
I see driver and.
Three and front. Frank the third and regular.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I just. I guess I had questions probably more due to the new format about whether or not this is complete.
Right.
I don't know if anyone is here. Doesn't look like it.
Violations, I think. I mean, I don't know of any violations from them.
I know, I know, I just.
So I don't know, but with the format, I don't know if it means there's none listed.
Exactly.
Or if it was just admitted because of an error with the system.
Well, I'm happy to move it, I guess, conditioned on, I think it goes to the town clerk first and just having. Verify that it's complete because he can maybe see things electronically that we can't see.
Yeah, I can check in with them.
Yep, so.
I would second that motion.
Motion by Susan, best second by Kerry to approve it conditionally and I'll follow up with the town.
Woodstock also has an ordinance that requires you to have a fire safety inspection. So within this process, the town will approve it and will come to the state, then it comes back to the town clerk. You don't get that fire inspection or it's not correct, that will be held up. You will not receive your liquor license.
So should we condition it on that as well?
No, you can approve it. That's internal with the partner. We won't let the license go out.
All right, so that is ready for vote. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries and I'll follow up Charlie.
Thank you.
So for all business, we just want to put the town hall rejuvenation discussion on the board. Just to keep it in everyone's. Focus that. Hopefully you can get this project moving forward.
I would like them, I mean, we haven't heard from them since we appointed the committee and I think that they should be coming back and giving us a report.
So do we, would we like to ask for?
I think that I. Talked to Charlie and they're having a meeting next week.
Okay.
So that we shut up.
Should we ask for an update? Maybe in March.
Yes.
I think so.
At our March meeting?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I was meeting today at two o'clock with one of the, someone from the committee.
Okay, so we'll be trying to ask them to come to our March evening meeting?
Yep.
Oh, March evening meeting.
Yeah, because I don't want to do it because we're talking about.
They will have to do the March evening meeting.
Yeah.
That's um. Village meeting day.
Oh.
So that we.
So we might need to reschedule.
Maybe, well, yes, maybe we'll do it in my morning.
Okay.
Because.
So we'll have to address that.
Yes.
At our next February meeting. Okay, thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mary. So new business, first item is the EDC community grants.
So the, you have in your packet, the EDC held our annual meeting about ten days ago. We, we, we had some changes, the most important change for this year versus last year, everything was the same except that we. Limited the funding to a hundred thousand dollars so that we could use the rest of our funding for our major initiatives and priorities. The community grants were not limited to our priority areas, although we preferred. Grant that was in those areas, which are marketing, housing, downtown rejuvenation, childcare and events. We would, you know. Prefer those. We received twelve applications. If you have copies of all twelve, I can tell you.
Oh, you do, yes, on that summary sheet, Joe, that you're list.
This year?
Yeah, so all twelve are listed there. We approved seven. I'll just briefly tell you about the seven. The, the ones that I think don't require any special, and you're welcome to ask questions are, are we approved a Wamba event, the mountain bikes, biking event.
Excellent.
It's going to bring a lot of people to Woodstock. We approved an expansion of the Odakwechi River Trail to improve accessibility. They're going to make it accessible to people with wheelchairs for a certain portion of that. And there's a fair bit of construction that has to be done. And we approved supporting production from barn arts in the town hall theaters, first time we've done sort of an artistic. Well, it's an event, I guess. It's a very small grant of two thousand dollars to help support part of their costs for putting that show on. Those three, and there are a couple that, sorry, we, we, then there are a couple that might, that where there was some. Interesting discussion, which we approved. The first one were two grants to the chamber, one for the beautification. For putting up the lights around the screen and the second for supporting Wassel Weekend again, basically busing to improve the parking situation. The, everyone supported these. We were. And we decided that every year we support these and tell people that we're only going to do it for one year, but we keep doing it every year. And we've decided this year to stop telling people that we will only do it for one year because for certain things, and these are the only things that we've identified so far. For certain things, they're not that expensive. Everyone in the town. Wants it. It addresses downtown rejuvenation. And so we decided to no longer object to sort of a perpetual funding of these small items. And so we've decided to, to do that and we will clarify our policy over the course of this. Official, but we approved those two grants. Similarly, we approved a grant for book stock for sort of the same reasons. This is the second time they came back to us. Last year we gave them a twenty thousand dollar grant. This year we gave them, we're giving them a twenty thousand dollar grant. But they've assured us, they told us last year that they might come back for a second year. We told them, well. Our policy is not to do that, but we keep doing it. And we decided to do it this year again. They, I don't think they're going to come back to us again, and I don't think they'll leave recurring funding. We have insisted in the case of book stock that they use some of the funds to keep count of the number of people come so that we can. Identify in the future whether there's any growth, because what we're interested in is growth. The second one, the other item, the only other item that had some interesting discussion and on which we put a. A requirement, a condition was we decided to fund. The school districts, a new position in the school district fundraising manager. They're looking obviously to raise funds for building the new school. This is not, the school budget isn't part of, you know, your responsibility, but we think having. Very strong schools is a very strong lever for economic development. We also think that a position of fundraising manager is something that will help Woodstock taxpayers. Because it's every dollar that they raise is a dollar that we don't have to pay it, or it's fifty cents at least that we don't have to pay in school taxes. They asked for thirty nine thousand dollars, which is funding a portion of the position. We said that we would give them. Sixty percent of that outright. And that we would give them the rest. On the condition that they came back to us. With a program that would describe how they will reach out to the six other communities that are part of the school district. And request their portion of the funding. We told them that they, that we're not making the grant contingent on. Them getting the funding from the other towns, because then they wouldn't be able to hire the person. And we felt, to be honest, that it was worth it, even if we had to pay for the whole thing. It would be unfair, but it would be worth it. But we require that they request from the other six towns that their municipal governments fund the remaining fifteen thousand dollars. And they agreed to that.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
What happens next to school year for to pay for that salary?
So this, this is a one year grant.
Okay.
The, all of these grants are one, one time. If they wanted. And so for the ones that we're repeating, they're reapplying.
Well, I mean, the person they're going to hire.
Oh, I don't, that's their decision.
Okay.
I suspect, I can only speak for myself, that this is not something that, like. The lights that we would fund on an ongoing basis. I can't commit the agency to that, but for me personally, I would say. Look, you needed to have built this into the school budget. You know, you had a year to do that. We were generous at first year, so, but that's just my personal.
Yeah.
I, we do feel strongly that supporting the schools is the second grant that we've given to the school system over the last five years, the first, you know, so. We think that school is part of economic development, but anyway.
Thank you.
So those are the, those are the grants. They, they total ninety seven thousand five hundred dollars. The other grants that we received, right, anyway, if you have any questions, I can let you know about those, but.
I have some questions on the Odakwechi River Trail.
Yeah.
Has that been run by the village or the town? At all?
Has it been?
Are the insurance? I, I, my concern is, you know, and I asked this the other night when you, when this was being discussed, but. Has this been run by the Vermont Department of Disabilities to make sure this is all going to not start up? A spiral with more work to be done? And I'm not sure where the trailhead starts. Does it start on, on the top of East End or does it start down by the river?
It starts at the top of East End, like where the Puma lot goes down to what was the jungle.
Okay.
Then you go further towards Sunset Farms, it's right there on the left.
All right. I, I just think we need to make sure that.
That's what he's talking about.
I, I just think we need to make sure that this is being done correctly and under the ADA guidelines.
Okay, I, that's, I would say three things. One is, that's obviously a good requirement. Two is not knowing, and I'm going to, three is going to be, we'll follow up and we'll make this a condition of approval. But I will say that this project of all the projects that we funded is, there's no project that's better run than this project. They've come back to us for three or four grants. It's, they're doing an extremely good job. However, that doesn't answer your question, so I will, if we'd like, we could make.
Clarification, right? Do you mean for access to the trail from the parking lot area? Or do you mean?
Just, just anything, you know, whenever you, and, and I've dealt with this a lot in my past. Whenever you start something with the ADA, you have to make sure that everything is in compliant parking spaces. The, you know, how to get there, the, the pitch. I mean, there's a lot involved. It's not just making an area and saying this is going to be ADA accessible.
Right, okay, so. You referenced the Vermont Department of Disabilities. Do they provide guidance on?
Just guidance. I mean, you know, what, what are they, is the, there's a, the department, this, in the Department of Natural Resources, they have a disability office, I think.
Okay.
You know, just, just to make sure we're doing this correctly.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Agreed. Are we, can we work to, we have very well worded ADA law by the law.
Okay, so should we, could we make this a conditional on Tom working with David and David saying that it's appropriate approval?
Yeah, and then if there's any further questions that come up, you'll just address them as.
There's a lot of gray areas.
Perfect. Perfect, so then. We can approve these seven, one singular motion, right? And then that's seeing the motion can include a request to have follow up on the. Odakwechi River Trail ADA accessibility.
And I think we also need to have our insurance company be aware of it. Just in case some, you know.
I know VLCT has been down to the East End Park, interviewed it. I don't know about the Odakwechi River Trail.
Right. No, I'm just talking about, yeah, I don't think they have either, but we're adding this, I think, just.
No, I.
I, I think we need to have the insurance company be aware of it.
The, the town's insurance. Dave just pointed out that the Odakwechi River Trail is not town owned. Project or land, so it don't, our insurance wouldn't cover it.
Okay, so none of that's on a town property?
None of it's on the town property?
No, the town property ends before it begins.
Okay.
We own the other side of that border.
Right.
The trail end is on the private side.
Right.
Okay.
So if that's the case, then I, I will advise Tom to talk to Dave, but do we need to have that as a condition? That's fine.
So any new feature installed, whether it's walking paths. You know, playground is required by law, the private or public.
Okay, so then. Got it. So then would the condition should be attached to it?
Yeah, I think so. So I entertain that. Motion, Ray, do you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the EDC grants with the condition that. The Odakwechi River Trail meets with David to make sure this meets all the ADA requirements.
Seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Just while we're on EDC business, we, I don't know that we need to do this officially, but one EDC member asked that I do this, that it's reflected in. At the last, not the last meeting, but the last time we came before you, that you set a condition on our childcare grants. That we review the legality. We have done that and we've sent you, I think, the communications, Joe, I don't know.
Yeah, I forwarded it to the court.
Okay, so that is now been agreed to and therefore we are proceeding with that grant.
Right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. So from the listeners' office, we have a certificate of approval for no appeal or suit pending. My understanding, this just means that. Townwide, the listeners' office is not involved in lawsuits or have any appeals or pending, and then we just certify to the state. And your office has already signed this, so we just need to distribute this among the select board to sign return to you and you send it to the state. Okay. Is there any questions on that? All right. I don't even think we need a motion. We'll just. Have, we can DocuSign this, Nikki. So we'll just send this around.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other business.
To, we have to do, approve the sewer rate.
No, I mean, other, other, yeah, just as the agenda.
Right.
So moving forward, we have the approval of the sewer rate. Which is actually less. Than last year. So the sewer rate for this year is eleven point forty eight per dollars per hundred cubic feet. And the next two items are two different examples.
Well, we have to approve the sewer rate before we go to the other item.
No, no, that's what I'm talking about, right?
Oh, okay.
There's two. There's two example utility bills in our packet. That, because the, the format of the utility bill has changed. So just, it's just there for our reference, right, Nikki?
Correct, yeah.
Just so we can see it. But the sewer rate itself, that consumption detail page is the same as it's, as it's been in the past. Just the, the rate actually went down this year.
Excellent.
It was in the thirteen.
Last year was thirteen point thirteen.
Yeah, one, three, one.
Yeah.
And I think that's because the usage was so down during COVID, during shutdowns, when the end and everybody was shut down. So everybody kind of got tagged.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the sewer rate.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consumption rate has been approved, which brings us to.
Joe, before we go, before we get further into this, I'd like to, for our next meeting, have a discussion on. Having a payment plan. Three, three payments for the sewers so we can spread the payments out over the year. I spoke to John a little bit about this and if we start, if we get two payments. We could start putting that money and collecting interest. And we could base the payments on last year's sewer bill with the third sewer bill being doing March first and having that. Adjusted to reflect the exact amount of the sewer bills.
Do you mean billing ahead?
Yes.
Oh, I think we can do that.
I think he's just asking that we put it on a future agenda to discuss, and I think.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to discuss it now. I'm saying let's put, I'd like to get it on the agenda for the next meeting.
We can discuss it, but we can't bill ahead. I don't think.
Why can't we?
We do with taxes. I mean, your tax bill is due in November and that covers July through the end of December. So it's partly billing ahead. So I don't know, but I think.
These bills are technically a little bit ahead because we're sending them out like now, for example, and it's July first, twenty twenty two to June thirtieth.
Right, so we're billing ahead now, so I don't see what the problem is, and with the sewer commission, we can make the rules.
I think we need to also, though, look at the expense of doing that.
Yeah.
Both in staff time and postage. Yes. You know, I know when it was discussed before, we weren't going to have any, it was going to just be voluntary. You know, there, there wasn't going to be a penalty or interest if you didn't make that payment.
Well, that, that's why I want to have a discussion.
Yeah, so I think we need to maybe also know what the expense would be, both in staff time, postage, extra printing, things like that. To make sure that we're not spending more than the potential.
No, I agree.
Okay. So we'll put a agenda item under other business for the February meeting.
Like next year? Because we're going to send out the bills this week.
Yeah, I mean, we have, okay. I mean, yeah, we don't want to hold up billing.
Yeah.
The bills could go, this year's bills can go out. It has no effect on this year's bills.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And we are.
So maybe we could do it in March. Would that be too late to do it in March? Because the February meeting, I think, is going to.
No, we could do it in March.
Okay.
No, it doesn't have to be done in February, but I just want to get it on the agenda at some point.
Okay. All right, so sewer billing. So approve the sewer rate, so that there's a sewer payment request for eight Ford Street.
I read this, it seemed like it wasn't an issue, like my normal thing with getting missed at real estate closings, that doesn't look like that applied here. It looked like it was a problem with our system that they didn't get the bill. So I feel like we, that that should be abated if it was.
Okay.
Our error.
All right. Does anyone else have any comments on that?
No.
All right, I entertain the motion.
I'll move, we abate one hundred and forty one dollars and twenty one cents.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed. That motion carries. Approval of minutes, one seventeen and one twenty three.
There's one thing. The, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
This call. It's support of approving Bridgewater's funding as well. It's funding.
We need to be there.
Yes.
That's all, both in favor of funding.
Sometimes. Everything else looked good to me.
Yes, yep.
So I didn't, you know, approve both of those.
Yeah. Um, I think Mary.
Yeah, so where's made the motion? Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Susan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So quick, before we adjourn. We would like to discuss at the, at our next meeting, I'm going to set aside ten to fifteen minutes, probably fifteen minutes. To hear community comments on ideas for ARPA spending and requests.
Might be more than that.
It might be more than that.
If I can make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, we could set up an online survey.
Okay.
And have residents and business owners go in and suggest what they want to survey, and then we can kind of put it all together and have a discussion afterwards. Of the top priorities.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
We have, Joe and I had discussed, and we have some bullet items that, you know, we think should be on the list. I don't know if it's helpful to. Put those out for people first.
Yeah, I think we could put, you know, the board's priorities and then have also an option for people to put their own.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I think that would be great. A lot of towns have been doing, you know, a lot of reach out for that money.
And Nikki, you can share a Word document that you can type in in real time on the screen. So we could probably even realistically use the screen like a, like a whiteboard. So we can take notes in real time.
Yeah.
So I'll put that pretty early on, on the agenda for our next meeting.
And we'll get to you with the list.
Yeah.
Get discussed and, I don't know, other board and, and get it to the.
I have four, I talked to Mary after we talked, they haven't talked to Ray Carey yet.
Okay. Yeah, and if that meeting's going to be moved, we just need to know.
Because everyone won't be moved, it'll be the March one.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
So we should, we should be all set. Um. February, February twenty first.
Okay.
We'll still be at six, the March one, whenever that is.
Well, March is town meeting day. No, town meeting day, but it's March.
Okay. Yes.
And that, and then village. And that, and then village meeting day is twenty-second, twenty-first. And that's village meeting day.
Right.
And we don't. We do not do that.
No.
But is there a meeting during the day or at night?
Well, it's at night meeting.
Oh, okay.
And, um, we might do that today, the day.
So maybe we do it, just move it to ten AM or something. So also thank you everyone for waiting for me. I was running late, I got stuck at the office a little bit, so.
Thank you. That's alright.
But I think we're ready to adjourn if no one has anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright. Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you.